All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't control the corner.
I'll try to navigate. That's the article.
It looks like policy should have been here three years.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, like, kind of.
You okay?
We did get here.
Put your own hand on mine.
No, no, we can't.
I thought the Louie was supposed to put all this in my binder for me.
No.
Now, who are... Question is, at least it's got three holes.
Those serengeti?
Manly Jim.
Manly Jim.
A big titanium guy. I love Manly Jim. On my limbs. And when I got there, I got the red ones. Really cool. I don't know if I slap or something.
They're limbs.
Yeah. So I gotta nail it in, and I guess they do it. Sixty-five for my limbs, but...
Yeah, considering.
Considering what they...
What is my wedding rings to be titanium? Uh, what that dimple looks like. It's so hard.
Yeah.
It's a...
They can't do it.
Yep, very, very...
And my bike's all tie.
Is it?
It made six-four tie.
Uh-huh. Mine is better.
Yeah, it's a hard tell. It's under eighteen pounds. Between the titanium and all the carbon fiber that's on it.
It's funny.
It's told about that power to weight ratio. Now we're talking ergonomics.
So you can really fly far with that.
I'm looking at the top.
I have written...
Okay, this is running joke for us.
Today's a Louie mine over the weekend.
That was the last one back, and pacing myself.
That's right. All right, Laura, are you ready?
I'm ready.
To begin.
I'm ready. Okay, first page, let's talk about the multi-year forecast. And this is specific to the general fund. There'll be a multi-year forecast for the other funds that we'll discuss on the other nights, but let's... This one's specific to the general fund. Very briefly, at the top of the page, you will see revenues then a total, then expenditures in a total, and a surplus and/or shortfall. Bottom of the page, funds available. And then the last is funds available as a percentage of expense. In short, for the year 2012 estimate, which is an update or revision of where... This is where we are today, as opposed to the 2012 budget that we made at this time last year. Fund balances increased to thirty-nine percent from thirty, which essentially indicates our general practice here is to make conservative revenue estimates and not as conservative expenditure estimates, in which case you hope that the inverse relationship happens by the end of the year. Revenues come in better and expenses come in less, which has been our history, because it would be a very uncomfortable situation to come and tell you we did just the opposite. So, um, that bottom line is, fund balance is nine percent better than we anticipated this time last year when we were creating the 2012 budget. That being said, we take that same practice in the 2013. You do historic trending on all things revenues and all things expenditures, and I'll go through very briefly some of my assumptions, but same being said, conservative revenue estimates, not as conservative expenditures, although we've been through a pretty grueling process here as staff, and they're pretty conservative now. And bottom line is that bottom of 2013, we're still at twenty-nine percent, and we'll go through what is the shortfall, et cetera, here in just a minute. And the multi-year forecast is designed, as I've talked about last week, you do your current year's revision, where we are now, which leads you into the 2013 budget process, which we're going through. This time next year, we'll revise thirteen and go to fourteen, but you do your current years and with an eye on the future. Don't, don't do... You just make sure that things look okay in the future, and I've told you several times, 2015 and 2016 at this time look to be somewhat uncomfortable, but many things can change. You're talking two years from now, and if any of us know what's gonna happen for sure two years from now, we are much in demand somewhere else. So, um, and things get much better by 2018, and the simple reason for that is much of our debt issued in the past was issued on a ten-year timeline, and that's when many, many things drop off, and my projections for the TIF repayment comes off in about 2016-ish. That's a moving timeline, but things get better in 2017, all assumptions holding where we are today. So, very, very quickly, well, matter of fact, let's... I'll do them now, and then I'll do them again when we go through more in detail. Some of my revenue assumptions, and there's a place here in a minute for detail. One percent increase in property taxes for 2013. That is based on the county appraisers' presentation in February of one percent increase to taxable properties within the city. I do... I have extremely conservative assumptions in there for city sales tax. Currently, I'm showing two percent in 2013. That's where we are today. It is still... It's been trending at two percent over previous years, and it's still trending at two percent. That's for city sales. County sales, I only included a three percent increase for 2013. Right now, it's nine. And then there's a component called use tax, which use tax is anything that's purchased outside of Kansas that's used in Kansas that didn't get sales tax charged, it gets taxed use tax. It's the same thing. In other words, it's sales tax that wasn't charged at the time. So it's another component of sales tax currently. I'm showing county use tax as flat, although it's sixteen percent right now, but county use tax is not as large a monetary component as the others, so that's... I'm not all that concerned about county use tax. City use tax, I'm showing it flat to minus one, and it's at six. So, very, very, very conservative. I would trend them up but for I watch weekend news, economic shows ad nauseam, and it... I just... I really, truly believe this county and this city are in economic bubble. We've seen that year over year over year, but I cannot make myself fit those really rosy assumptions in there yet. So I'm expecting at the end of the year, I'll come back and say, hey, we got more money than I said we would in the budget, and that's better than telling you the opposite. And the expenditures, we'll go through what they are in 2013, but I will tell you the biggest difference in 2014 and beyond, other than capital outlay items, which change every year. We decide we do or don't need something. The biggest consistent item is the change in the city's capers contribution that's being proposed by the Kansas Legislature. Went ahead and built those in as if they were going to happen, because it sounds like they're going to, and it's a whole lot easier to take them out than to put them in later. And just so you know, that increases our employer contributions forty-seven percent during that time span. It's a lot. So that's the biggest consistent likely-to-happen thing out there in 2014, 2017. So with that being said, I really don't have anything else to say on this page unless you have questions. We'll get into the more detailed stuff as we go through each component here behind this page.
I have a question, not because there's... I just wanna make sure I'm thinking right here. The expenditure total increase, I'm sorry, percent increase from previous year in 2012 is because we haven't trued up everything to know what that...
In 2012.
Twenty-twelve budget, column two.
Twenty-twelve budget, column, okay. What are you saying to me? I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
We have negative three percent for 2011, actual zero percent on the estimate for 2012.
Those are carrying... They're calculating from the columns before that you're not seeing here.
Okay. I got it.
Got it, yeah. That really has no bearing.
Nope.
So you're reading it correctly, though. If you were to look at 2013, where it says eight percent, that's an increase from the 2012 budget, not the 2012 estimate.
Estimate, okay.
And it also... I'll go through why it's so much here in just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I kinda had some of these same questions last year, and I just refresh my memory, if you would, please. You know, what we're showing here is a, is a three-quarter million-dollar shortfall, basically, uh, for this year, uh, on higher revenues, uh, and, uh, a, uh, expected fund balance, uh, in 2015 and 2016 of seventeen percent. I realize that thirty-nine is high. I realize twenty-nine is acceptable, uh, but considering the United States of America had a, a dip in their credit rating, uh, just this last year, uh, what is seventeen percent in 2015, 2016 going to, to, to do as far as the people at...
Moody's?
Moody's or Standard and Poor's or...
They will ask about it, perhaps. They did not the last few bond issues I've had. If they do, I will tell them, but it is not yet reality. They base your credit rating on today. Many other components go into it, including what the school's doing and, and what Sprint is doing and what the region is doing, and foreclosures in Kansas City and management. They talk about continuation of management, and all those things go in together. They may or may not ask. I will not lie to them if they do. They will not base your credit rating on that component until we get to 2015, and it says seventeen percent. That's going to make them very unhappy. I don't expect that to happen. As I said, this year's went up nine percent over where we thought we were this, this time last year, and I expect that trend to continue. I, I hesitate to make big changes in 2013 or something in 2015 and 16 that we're still considerably far away. For example, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings changes those numbers up like two percent.
Okay.
So at the time even.
Uh, total operations expenditures look like they've gone up nearly half a million dollars.
On what year are we talking about?
I'm talking about 2012 budget, 2013 budget.
We can get in... I mean, as I go through, we'll, we'll hit each one of those components. I'll get to them here in just a sec.
Bingo.
Okay. I knew you'd ask, and I've got it all there. And if I don't answer it, ask again.
Will do.
Okay.
So do all of these inserts go in order in the general fund tab?
Actually, this one, multi-year forecast, goes in the, the tab, goes behind the tab that says budget overview. There's a tab inside your book called budget overview. The one we just went over goes there. And then everything else goes behind the general fund tab.
You should have a directory in the front that would show where they go.
Yeah, there's an index up front.
There's an index in front that shows where they go.
There will, like I said, there'll be other multi-year forecasts on the other funds when we get to them, but this one's the one we're doing first. Okay, so this next section, we'll do the one that says general fund, and it has the chart of staffing chart and whatever on it. I was just going to cover the items of note, which will address many of Councilman Morales' questions right here, and again, when we get to the specific program, whether it be community development, administration, finance, whatever. There is, I have anticipated, no change to the general fund mill levy, currently at twenty-three point one oh seven mills. I've not built any change to the mill levy when we get to this into there. Two thousand thirteen increases in expenses, these are the major items. There is, for personnel services, a three, currently in there, a three percent increase for employee wages. And I'm reading these because we're recording it, so I don't wanna insult your intelligence, but let's put it on the recording. There is a lease purchase of a replacement wheel loader, and I spread the payments over five years, starting in 2013. As City Administrator Press mentioned earlier, there is fifty thousand dollars added in. He, he talked about some staffing and community development. We put that in as seasonal, for lack of a better term, wages in community development. That it just means without benefits and to be shared between planning and codes administration as, as consulted later. It's a placeholder. The twenty-five thousand dollars worth of the shortfall is the Economic Development Committee's recommendation to move the funding for the Southwest EDC out of the transient guest tax fund, where it has been residing the last two years, back into the general fund where it was, except for the last two years. So that's twenty-five thousand there. And then a significant part of the shortfall is the anticipated coverage of two hundred thousand dollars in debt service for the park sales tax fund. We talked last week about how you can pay some things from other funds and you can't pay some things. You know, some things have restrictions and some don't. When you have a shortfall, and we've already used our park funds, special parks, park improvement, to cover the shortfall in park sales tax that park sales tax fund pays for the pool and celebration park, we've used the other funds that we know we can use. The only other place to cover an anticipated shortfall is the general fund. So that's where we're at right now. That's two hundred thousand dollars worth of the seven hundred and some.
I think I know the answer, but I wanna ask. If we, you know, we've been not using, or we've been using more than sales tax for that fund. Should sales tax increase to a point that it, um, shortens the payback? Can we pay back the general fund?
Sure, absolutely.
From that sales tax?
Uh, I don't think you're gonna have that happen.
Okay.
What we can... But see, I talked last week about if the bond and interest fund got better...
Right.
There's, there's some money moving back and forth between streets and special highways and parks and some other places. I can unwind some of those back into the general fund.
Okay, to cover.
Right. I, I can move other places, not necessarily...
From the sales.
From park sales tax. But I can unwind other things.
Cover them.
Back to the general fund. I don't think you're gonna have anything left over in park sales tax.
Yeah, okay.
It, it would be wonderful if something were to happen, but it expires in 2015, so it would almost have to be happening now.
Starts to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Hope is not a plan.
That is right. Exactly, hope is not a plan. Okay, so, um, next page is just a chart, it's a visual, that just shows how the general fund is split along all departments and then expenditures by type. So, for example, the blue shows we spend the biggest part of our pie on police, and the red, the next chart down, shows you spend most of the money on staff, because, because governments provide service, so that only makes sense.
So that would encompass the police as an example?
Yes. But i- in other words, all things general fund, what things we pay from the general fund, administration, community development, finance, et cetera, et cetera, is the first chart. Second chart is, and of those fun, of those programs, this is how the money shakes out for expenditures. Okay. Next page is just some internal performance things that show you that we've had the same amount of staff since 2011. We don't anticipate increasing any full-time equivalents or anything in 2013, and we've... There was a big difference between 2010 and 2011. So that's, uh, that was pretty significant. Some of it included the transfer of personnel to the Johnson County Fire. That was in 2011. You see how police went from forty to twenty-nine. And then in 2010, we held lots of positions vacant, and then we eliminated them. Okay, um, the pages after that, this page that just is a, just a four-year, this page does general fund, and it shows revenues and expenses, and that's the same one we just covered, only it just shows the 2013 budget. Doesn't show the out years. And then we can move on to the general fund revenues, and I already discussed that I've got a one percent increase in 2013 for property tax. That's the very first line, ad valorem property tax. Skipping down to where I already discussed city sales and use tax and conservative estimates there. And then there really isn't anything to note. I will note down in, uh, just so that you know, I will provide you with some supplementary information on what all of these taxes are, how they're developed and whatever, but I do not have that updated for this year yet, so when you... I will provide that is not anything other than what, what makes up these numbers. Not, not in detail, but in other words, what is our natural gas franchise? What is our cable franchise? What is the grants? What is blah, blah, blah? And I can actually answer some of those questions now if you have anything specific, but, um, for, you know... Okay. And then, uh, I really don't have anything else to point out on this. It's a listing of the general fund revenues. Because I already talked about the ones that kind of involve assumptions. The rest are pretty much trending. Moving on? Okay. Next section, administration. Administration is composed of mayor and council, the administration department, meaning Mike, Katie. And then there's a section of economic development that that is simply the EDC that we just talked about. That's all that's in there. There is no staff. HR and city clerk. The only item of note in this particular program is the staffing change that was already mentioned, proposed staffing change. And then you just have some charts, performance measures, just the same thing. General fund chart on the left is exactly the same as the one you just looked at, and then the expenditures for administration is the one on the right.
Laura, I see there's a, there's a difference between 2012 and 2013 on this page here in FTE count from six to five.
Yeah, that's, that's the reorganization plan, we're taking out this, the city administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it'll actually show up in community development as the addition, for lack of a better term, of community development director, so it just moves over. Mayor and council is your next program. This, we just put in the vision for you here and, uh, some performance measures from the citizen survey, satisfaction survey, and there are no changes of huge note, staffing or otherwise, this is, this is where all of you are paid from. And there isn't any particular item of interest or note in the increase in expenses. Like, uh, every other year, you pay for the citizen survey, which is why it fluctuates there between 2012 and 2013.
That's what is the big part of that thirteen thousand dollar difference?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, eleven thousand of it. It's in, it's in line thirty-one fifteen. The, uh, 2013 department request or manager approved either one, that's the citizen survey. That is pretty much the only fluctuation.
Sorry, Keith, no big reasons.
City administration, next program. Again, no specific items of note, because I don't wanna be confusing to the people who are listening on recording, there is an administration division, and now we're talking about city administration program within the administration division. So there was also mayor and council, city clerk, et cetera. This is one of the components of the administration division. And the only major changes in this is the 2011 personnel services total and the 2012 totals are reflecting the vacancy of the city administrators since March 2011. I don't have anything else to say. That's pretty much it. Uh, I guess the only other thing is legal services. You'll see an increase in line thirty-one oh two. It's the first line underneath contractual services. It's a pretty significant increase in legal services. That is to reflect the actual trend. We have spent, in 2008, nine, and eleven, we spent more than forty-five thousand dollars, so we did not feel it was appropriate to leave it at thirty thousand if for three out of four years, you spent more than forty-five. So, and that's, that's it. That is all the changes in that.
Laura, what are the outsourced services? Is that janitorial and so forth from zero in 2012 budget to fifty-four thousand?
That's Mike. Because you're not paying a city administrator.
Okay.
That's all that's there.
Yes, ma'am. And does that encompass, pretty much, or that covers basically the drop from the budget estimate in line one of that same thing, eleven oh one? For the full-time personnel?
Right. You don't, you did not have city administrator for most of that year and half of this one. And then you have... Mike is not a employee. He's a contractual service, so that's why it moves down.
Would the capers retirement change any based on the state guidance once all that comes out or not for twenty-three oh one?
Are you asking me if...
If those dollars have gotten past the limits for 2012 of sixteen free, and then it jumps to twenty-nine, twenty-two nine?
Because I'm anticipating that you have, you'll pay a city administrator for a full year.
Okay.
And actually, the capers changes don't start till 2014.
Fourteen, okay.
So that, that just simply reflects we're expecting a, someone to be here all year?
Yes, ma'am.
We have mixed juice and sucker punch.
Yep.
Right. We'll, we'll be having a discussion in fourteen. I'm pretty sure I interpreted what it said correctly. I've read it many a time. I don't think I messed that up. I hope so. I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. It's pretty substantial.
All of the, all of the discussion from everyone that's been following it is that the burden goes to the employer.
Well, there's a one percent increase for employees each year.
Right, but the...
Also.
The big jump is...
For employer.
For the employer.
That is, that is correct.
And that is to cover the unfunded...
The liability.
Liabilities that exist in capers, uh, from the state and, uh, school.
It's actually, a lot of it's the school.
Yeah, school, yeah, school and state. The local governments, there are some, I mean, it's, it's kinda catching up, but it's still a lot better.
It's better.
Than what it was. So that's the, the essence is that, is that we're trying to pool some of that to kinda spread the pain.
Historically, local governments have covered the shortfall from, uh, teachers and, and others in the system, uh, state employees as well.
They didn't ask us.
Well, no.
I mean, it's, it's not really...
It happened.
We can't refuse.
No, it happened.
So, yeah. I mean, it hasn't passed yet, but I built it in.
The other, uh, the other thing that did not hap-
The other, uh, the other thing that did not happen was the, uh, the change from the defined benefit plan. That's still moving forward, or they, uh, they've not, they've not taken any action with respect to defined benefit.
They will.
They will, but they have not.
It sounded as if new people.
May, but I don't think they've taken any.
No, I haven't heard any actions specifically, no.
But that's the plan, is, uh, tenured, uh, tenured or less, or not tenured.
Vested.
Not vested.
Yes, not vested, sorry, different, different.
Not vested in new hires.
Non-vested in new hires would not be eligible for defined benefit.
Right.
Correct.
That is what I heard as well. But that is most of the discussion that I, most of the stuff I get, and you get it too, from the league.
Right.
Snippets and whatever, I just took those formulas out of there and built it in, so. As I said before, the Economic Development section, there is absolutely nothing in this except for moving the payment to the EDC. Back to this, I will mention, because some of you are new, and there's people listening on the recording, prior to 2011, it was paid in the General Fund, and 2010, we paid twice this.
Yes.
This has been halved. So, we went from 2010, a payment of fifty thousand seven hundred, to twenty-five thousand. We put it in a different fund for two years. Now we're moving it back to the General Fund, and it's still a half of what it used to be. HR, and I will, Mary is here if you have any specific questions. I can't see her, but I know she's over there, 'cause, um, sorry, come in. There are no particular items of note in this. And as you can see by their Satisfaction Surveys, everybody thinks HR does a fantastic There are an increase of two full-time employees. Those are both for Gardner Energy. There is no change to the rest of the city's staff. And there is no particular change in the budget at all. I mean, these are very minor, so if you have a question, I'd be happy to figure it out, but there isn't anything to point out.
Funding for supervisor training, safety, and so on, is that in HR and then transferred out to the departments, or is that just built into the departments?
It's just paid through HR.
Okay.
And if it's safety, then it's paid through RIS.
Right, okay.
City Clerk. City Clerk Program, there is, the only thing I wanted you to be aware of on this is that the advertising and legal expenses, which is like right in the middle of the Contractual Services section, it's line forty-seven oh-one, that is completely dependent on the amount of development and amount of changes to the city's ordinance. So, it, we trend it as best we can, but if we make a lot of ordinance changes, it requires publication, publication is expensive, et cetera. I mean, it just.
But the legislature did pass a change in publication.
I heard that. I don't know much about it during this discussing it.
Essentially, it, uh, it permits a summary publication rather than the entire.
It makes reference to where you can find the entire.
Document. So, it's a summary. It talks about, uh, you know, it says annexed land, you know, west of town, south of fifty-six, um, you know, whatever. And then, if you want to see the, so you don't have to publish the entire legal description. So, that's changed, and that begins July one this year.
How about, just because I don't know, what about things for like, all of our bond issues and stuff, some of those are pretty, everything, everything?
Everything, everything from the required, required publication. So, it cuts down, and we publish voluminous things, it cuts down. I think, but the, uh, the city attorney has to review the proposed publication, summary before it goes, so.
And we don't know if publication rates will change.
As a result.
To accommodate.
We do not.
We do not. It did not make any huge change. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money. If we have some savings, fantastic, but I did not make any changes based on what Doreen had told me. Finance Division. The first page is just an overall summary, just like the others, of Finance, and the only item of note, uh, City Administrator Press already mentioned the reorganization plan, and that doesn't change the FTEs, it's just a reshuffle, proposed reshuffle. Same thing as all the others. There's a chart that says the General Fund by all departments, and then a chart specifically to Finance next to it, just for comparison. Finance handles everything having to do with money. That's pretty much everything, so, uh, it's a Service Department. So, moving on to Finance Administration, there is nothing of interest in my budget whatsoever, because basically everything in the Finance Administration budget is required by law, like audits, arbitrage calculations. That's ninety-nine percent of everything we do. I will, I know you'll be interested in the second page of the text for Finance Administration. There's a whole lot of, um, documentation there related to our debt limit, and how much of it's utility-supported, and how much of it's benefit district, and per capita, and blah, blah, blah. There's a lot of info there. I don't know, you can see declining debt generally, shows the declining outstanding amounts on Celebration Park, the average interest rate on our checking, et cetera. We've got all kinds of, basically statutory debt limit-related stuff. And then, like I said, there's nothing in the Finance Administration budget of interest. Pretty much all required. Oops, sorry.
Laura, on the program measurements for the percentage of debt limit use, is there a number that we try to remain in that's optimal, or is that just a, just a calculation?
No, you're not allowed to go, um, let's see. The debt limit is up at the top, so it's the line that says statutory debt limit is thirty percent of the city's assessed value. We are nowhere near that. In other words, of our limit, we've only used thirty, what year am I looking at? Thirteen, thirty-nine percent of our limit. So, we are nowhere near our limit. And, you know, for whatever reason, the legislature's decided what counts and what doesn't count. There's a little footnote here, but simply put, they decide, we just have to comply.
Yeah, play with the budget.
So, we, we comply. We have a great deal of clearance in our compliance. Accounting Services, again, it's a service, internal service as much as external service, but you guys know they do the, they take care of the audit and the caper and whatever. There is nothing in this budget of interest. I will say that the biggest number in this is under Contractual Services, Outsourced Services, that's payroll outsourcing, and that's not all of it, but they do the quarterly, they do all the reporting and all the follow-up, sending child support payments and et cetera, et cetera. It's a pretty labor-intensive, uh, deal. And there isn't much to say. We're very happy with our provider. We have discussed many different options. We've talked about in-house and not in-house, whatever. We used to be in-house, and we do not have the staff to bring that back in-house.
How long have we outsourced them for?
Probably since at least 2002.
Okay. Ten years.
Yeah. All my years kind of run together, but I can tell you, I used to do it and all the follow-up, but this is a, that's really labor-intensive, and as the law has changed, one of the other things you get from outsourced services is they're responsible to keep up with all the payroll changes and the taxing changes and all that stuff, and we don't have to stay on top of that. So, that's pretty important right there, is the risk shifting.
A question on Personnel by Program, FTE, kind of right in the middle of the page, their accountant.
Uh-huh.
I see that we're not projecting that we would add an FTE to fill that line item. Is that, is that fair, and would we have the flexibility to add it if necessary, based on growth and necessary support of that growth?
Well, you know, because you're new, would you indulge me in a little history here?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, because I'm very familiar with this. Back in, before, see the little, the little stars under 2010? There was a time that we had an accounting manager, two accountants, and an accounting clerk. During resizing in 2010, as positions became vacant, they were, I had one accountant eliminated completely, and all of the others were subsequently reclassified as something less than an accountant. So, we went from two to none.
Yeah, so you just got leaner and more.
We got leaner and frankly, less experienced. They're very wonderful people, they work very hard, but they are, they are not what we were before. So, and that's not, I'm not about people, I'm talking about position.
Yeah, the what, not the who.
Right, exactly. And, um, they're doing a great job, but we are definitely struggling, which is why I was kind of saying payroll is, gotta stay outsource, because we just couldn't take another thing.
Thank you.
Municipal Court, there's not a whole lot to say. That's also another, that's only a staff of two, and it basically turns over, one of those twos turned over every year for like three years in a row now. So, they stay inexperienced, but we're continuing to make, good people, good people work hard.
So, is that one full-time, is that part-time now?
No, it's two full-time.
Two FTEs, okay.
Oh, yeah, we keep getting a new one. They reshuffle every, every year. And there is nothing in this budget. Basically, um, the biggest line item in this, other than personnel itself, is again, legal services.
Right.
That is court-appointed, court-appointed attorneys, court-appointed interpreters. The law says you will, so that's all that, I mean, there you go. You will.
See, we actually make money on Municipal Court?
Well, sometimes, not always.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million, or, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, the revenue's a hundred-and-seventy-nine and.
Sometimes.
Well, it looks like every year we've made money.
Well, every year that shows here. I mean, and we may have always made some money. It's really not, it's hard to trend, because you never know how many tickets you're going to write, or how many get dismissed, or how many get blooded down, but yes, typically speaking, at least pays for itself and then some. And like I said, there isn't anything in this budget except you will provide court-appointed attorneys, and you will provide interpreters. Just to say, it's something that shows the world is changing. We actually had to get an interpreter from an African dialect I don't even know the name of. I'd never heard of it. So, we have hearing impaired, Spanish. We've done those for years, but we've had some Russian and some things I don't even know what they are. So, the world changes, and we get new people. Community Development, again, this is where your FTE shifted over, and it shows up as a director, for lack of a better term. And there is nothing of interest in here. On, on the summary page here in a second, we'll get to, to plan, to each individual program. Community Development Planning, I will point out some items of note in this. The, uh, specifically, the 2012 revised column, so in other words, the column that says 2012 estimate, has increased, uh, in outsourced services. So, in line thirty-one fifteen, there's a really large jump there. That is broken down into almost fifteen thousand dollars in consulting fees for landscape design standards and planning services. And then, Council may recall that you okayed a freight area payment. It was divided over two years. Twelve thousand five hundred shows up in the 2012 estimate, and the remainder's in 2013. Again, I mentioned fifty thousand dollars was included for non-person, I mean, it's for temporary personnel to be divided between these two programs. I just put it in planning, because it had a seasonal line, it doesn't matter, it's all in the General Fund, it's all in Community Development. I just put it in one line. And then, we did actually, City Administrator Plus removed eighty-five thousand dollars that was requested by the department for the Comprehensive Plan Update, not because he didn't think they needed it, but because it could be paid for. City Administrator Harrison Lee has a pretty sizable background in this, and if she were determined that's what she wants to use the money for, we could pay for it from existing fund balance.
Okay.
So, we, he did not leave, and maybe you should talk about that. I mean, you took it out, so.
I think it's an important consideration, and I think sooner rather than later, and instead of proposing it for the thirteen budget with a sizable increase, I believe we've had a really good year expenditure-wise and revenue-wise, and, uh, it's something that I think Cheryl will bring forward to you to consider to do at least yet this year, is to consider contracting for that.
One of the.
It's a one-time expenditure, so it's not an ongoing thing.
One of the items as well that came out, uh, from the discussion regarding the, uh, intersection improvement at Center and Main was a specific plan for downtown. And I assume that would.
That would be incorporated within?
Within that.
Within a comprehensive plan. You can do overlay plans separately or part of a more comprehensive plan. I think it's best at this stage, since you haven't done it since ninety-eight, I think.
Right.
Uh, to consider doing that, and then consider if you want to do a downtown overlay or downtown redevelopment plan. Incorporate that within it.
Laura, I have a quick question as a freshman councilman. Forty-seven fifty-six and forty-seven fifty-seven, are there any revenues generated from that, from, from that service, like through liens or so forth?
Forty-seven fifty-six.
The mowing we have to do for violators that don't take care of their property.
Right.
I'm sorry. You're looking at codes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was still in planning, I'm like, I don't see it. That's actually, yeah, it's the mowing, and we do, if they don't pay, that's assessed to their property on their property tax bill. So, it's an offsetting.
The revenue would come in somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Body would still offset.
That, that, got it.
So, is it revenue, revenue generating? No, it's offset.
Yeah, that wasn't the right word, but, thank you.
So, yeah, and codes administration, moving on. City Administrator Plus took out a replacement vehicle for twenty-two thousand dollars out of the 2013 budget, and that is the only significant change of note during this time period. And that shows down under capital outlay versus 2013 department request, twenty-two thousand, and then the next column, manager approved, zero. And the last section is transfers and other payments. All that's in here is a payment that you make every year to the cemetery, and then, as I discussed earlier, one of the big components of the seven hundred thousand and some shortfall is the expected coverage of park sales tax debt service for two hundred thousand. That's all that's in here.
Laura, one quick question. As I, as I flip through, it seems especially in the last section, the funds that we're spending on the meetings, training, and travel, almost by department, are going up each year, and some are, the approved amounts were even above what the department requested. I'm just curious if almost all of that, is it all dictated for certifications and other things, or are we electing to do more optional, some of these things that we maybe need to look at a little bit closer? It just, it, I know rather quickly, if you look and see what some of these actually are above what they were either budgeted and what their estimate cost for two thousand and twelve, and then looking at what their cost requested as a, compared to approved, just, um, looking within the Finance Department, you know, was one that I just put up. So, I'm just curious if we're really making sure that all these are necessary expenses, which I'm not doubting, but I do want to know why they seem to go up each and every year or above what their departments request.
Well, specifically in Community Development, we added a proposed position, so that person was added in that maybe they would go to a conference or whatever, as to specifically finance. finance. Part of that was for, I wanted the accounting staff to go to, no one's gone to a soft, the core business software comp we use, they haven't gone for years and years and years, and there's been updates that we don't know how to use. So I wanted someone to go to that, and one of them was also for me, it has been suggested by Dottie Riley that I attend, Joy, Joy, the National Association of Bond Lawyers Fundamentals of Post Compliance Debt Issuance Conference, because debt issuance is, you recall the last bond issue we had, we had to implement a policy because the IRS is getting all kinds of excited about our post compliance. So I was like, gosh, how do you even find out about all this, other than to call her every 10 minutes? And there is a conference, it doesn't even say where it is next year, that a person who's not a lawyer can go to, that she thinks it would be beneficial, and so I added it in. But I may or may not, depending on where it is, perhaps it's cost prohibitive, perhaps it's in Chicago, I don't know, but.
The other, I guess the other point from an historical perspective, if you look at prior to 2007, we're still below what we were, I mean, every, everything was essentially eliminated, and each conference is approved before expended, but I mean, it's, there are some from a police perspective that have to occur.
True.
Obviously, the fire now has been transferred over, so those have gone, but.
It's my observation that we don't do enough training.
Okay.
Quite frankly, professional certification notwithstanding, which has to be done, there are innumerable professional conferences that are very, very valuable to our understanding of the things that we're dealing with, and that are important to attend, like Laura mentioned, that's just one, there are many others, and very few staff take time to go to those trainings, and they come to me for approval for $125 registration fee to go to a planning conference to learn the latest in, fill in the blanks. So, training pays off, in my view. It's an investment, not an expense, to professional staff development, and it just makes us better. And I think we should do more than we're doing, quite frankly.
Is that something you think, as she comes to get started, that you would maybe suggest you identify where those training shortcomings might have been, so we can maybe?
That'll certainly be part of the conversation, I don't want to leave her in any particular direction, I want to make, let her make her own observations about that, but I'm guessing she will observe that, you know, our directors rarely go to conferences, and if they do, it's like they save up, and they don't do something else, or they defer two or three other smaller conferences to go to the national one. Yeah, and I suppose somebody could get the idea that those are things for people to get out of town, and enjoy some time with their peers, and party, and that sort of thing. That's just not the case. After hours, sure, there's some social activities, but for the most part, there's outstanding training that goes on at these professional conferences, and we ought to be in attendance. My observation is that a lot of the people here are leaders in their field, and they ought to be making presentations, not just going to the conferences, so it works both ways. But I think that, again, they're very, very cautious about that, they're very lean about that, they have other expenditures in their budget that they put at a higher priority than attending a conference. But, yeah, she'll probably look at that and have some recommendations.
Another thing is, when you see that increase, we've had staff turnover, and so we have different certifications that are required. So like, for example, Jeff Stewart would have playground certification, and various things that are required, so when we bring these staff in, because we've had turnover, then you'll see those increases in, in training as well, yeah.
So then it becomes a train the trainer situation then, right?
Well, some of them, yes, but some of them actually require that we send them to get the proper certification, and so we do a lot of train the trainers.
Sure.
But there are some that we are required to.
Just a necessity.
To specific, you know, professional organizations to get the certification.
I'm all about training, I mean, that's how you stay on the cutting edge in any industry for that matter.
To Mary's point, I mentioned the 50% court turnover in court, every time that happens, you got to retrain on the warrant system, you got to retrain on the in-code system, and we might have put money in for in-code conference, wherever it is, but last year we hosted it, ended up being free. So you put money in because, again, you have to assume you'll go somewhere and it'll cost, but perhaps it comes along that you can host it, or it's offered by, maybe something in GFOA, it's offered by Kansas GFOA at Overland Park, we don't have to pay for it, except for the $400 it costs to go. So you put it in because you're anticipating, but it may or may not actually cost as much as it says. Or because you know you need it, you get a turnover in accounting, and you don't know anything about governmental accounting, they got to find it somewhere, they don't teach it in college.
My, I guess we didn't have any questions about the presentations from last week, I don't doubt that there might not be some questions about what we went over this evening at the 25th work session, and we're going to like address that on the front end before we get into.
Right, keep that in, get those questions in.
And I would imagine you prefer questions as soon as we can get them to you.
If you have them, just please email them to Laura or myself.
Actually, if you could, in this particular week, curve and copy Mike, so he can readdress them, I'm going to be gone Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I have a son graduating from the police academy in Springfield, Illinois. So I will, I'll be back, but I, if you have something this week, he might be able to get an answer quicker by sending it somewhere else.
Can we have, fortunately, I'll be off for next week's meeting, I didn't know if there's an electronic version that this might be able to send, so if I did have questions before the next session, I could add those?
Of this part right here?
Not of this part, of what will be for the 25th meeting.
Um.
Not necessarily prior to the 25th, but after the meeting, if I.
Oh, sure, absolutely. It may be done early, I don't know, but absolutely, after it's been handed out, yes. It lives electronically, so sure, it can be sent to you, sure.
And may I provide an update on the three-hour coverage that Councilmember Fotovich asked about last week on the legal fees from NPR? We did get some information for you. The first thing that we all need to realize that we learned is all of our claims are covered through our existing coverage, so there is no additional fees associated with that. The three hours of legal services is kind of a benefit that's provided, and that's for employment practices. So if we are going to terminate someone or do disciplinary action, we can call this hotline, we have three hours per claim, that's free, so actually, it's a more of a, it's a benefit to us, it will not cost us anymore, and we should not see legal fees go up. So I wanted to just give you that clarification, because we did get that back from them.
If you had 10 claims, you had 30 hours in?
Yes.
Okay, or one claim for three hours?
One claim, yes, that's correct.
That's a great added value.
It is, very nice.
Especially with HR staff.
Wonderful. Have a great evening. I remain.
I looked at the clock a minute ago, when I was 10 minutes old.
Next Sunday.
They might still be playing. They're announcing they're trading, they could be playing next game here now.
I'm recording it.
Yeah, it's bottom of the 11, probably. I don't have my text for six times sports, so game's not over.
Don't tell me, I'm recording it.
Can you watch a baseball game on DVR?
Absolutely.
How do you watch baseball, period?
You have to.
No way I can watch a baseball game on DVR.
I can't DVR, I can't DVR any sporting event.
Well, you can't, because you can't do ball instructions.
No, you can't, I just can't do any sporting event, I just, what's done is done, it's not like this.
Our wedding. The union draft.
Go crazy.
I'm very busy.
I'm very tired of this morning.
Oh, my God. I picture what's happening. I remember that conversation.